For joining us for the school board meeting of independent school district seven twenty-one New Prague area schools. Meetings are recorded and can be viewed by accessing the school board page on the district website. Tonight, we don't have any request for an open forum, but I'll still read this anyhow. Open forums can be done by submitting a request before the school board meeting, I believe, by the noon on the day of the school board meeting. There are some guidelines that you need to follow, and we have a copy of that set of guidelines right here in the office. So if you do plan to ever participate in the open forum, make sure that you're acquainted with the rules of the open forum. With that being said, let's stand, please, and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
And all board members are present. We'll start with item four now. Spotlight on success: Human Resources. And I see Tony Boothey coming up to the screen, up to the desk.
Good evening, school board and superintendent. Thank you very much for allowing me to be here just a couple of minutes. It is an exciting time of the year for human resources. The entire summer was very exciting. Of course, this is my first summer that I've been the HR director, and I tell people it was a very full summer. And that's a really nice way of saying it's very busy in HR. And that's great. I would like to also acknowledge Amanda Kolok and Melissa Kartek, who are two of our HR specialists, and how lucky we are as a school district to have those two working for us. They have a wealth of knowledge, a great experience, they're very good at their job, and I just appreciate all that they have done to help me kind of acclimate to this new position, which I'm very much enjoying. So what I was just wanted to do tonight is I've got a few highlights, and when I say it's very busy, that's a good busy, meaning that school's starting, as everybody knows. And it doesn't just start when the teachers come or the students come on that very first day. It starts weeks before that. One of the things that we have prided ourselves on in educational services and academic service department over the last fifteen years is making sure that all of our staff is very welcomed to be here. We did an even better job of that this year. In the past, all we have really ever done was welcome the new teachers, and that was always the week before all of the teachers showed up. So on Monday, August eleventh, I had a little brainstorm of doing something different, and I have some really wonderful mentors out there also. And what we did was not only brought in our new teachers, but we also brought in all new staff. Anyone who has been here in less than a calendar year, we brought in. So we brought in about forty-five folks who were currently already working and/or were just going to be starting now that the students were coming back. And as you can see on the screen, I don't have to read it word for word, but it was an amazing day. And you don't have to take my word for it, but I would ask if you ever run across some of the employees who attended, we heard wonderful, wonderful reviews. The key was to make sure that all of our staff was welcomed. They feel and felt welcome and seen that they were provided with the opportunity to get to know other people. And I heard some of our support staff and/or teachers say, "I've never met anybody else besides a teacher," or support staff say, "I've never met a teacher before." So we mixed everyone together. We disseminated information, our HR specialists did, and benefits, that's always something that our employees have a lot of questions on. We never get enough time to really go through the benefits, and we took that opportunity. But the key is on the bottom there, and that is to create an environment that truly helps them be successful in their jobs. And that is something that's very important to me, because I see how busy it is with hiring and people coming and going. We want to and need to retain the positions that we open up, and we want to make sure that those people are successful in their jobs and to provide as much as we possibly can for that. All the other administrators were very engaged in that day, and they were there in the morning, and lots of introductions. Karen, I believe you were there also, and we appreciate that. So it was just a great day. Some of the other classes that you can see throughout that day, we took a bus tour of New Prague. We had many teachers and administrators speak, mental health, students with behaviors, building relationships, not only with kids, but parents and other staff. And that's probably something that you don't see support staff get a lot of, right? If you're a custodian, they bring you in and they give you the custodial work, and here's where this is at, and here's where theirs at, and this is what your job is, and then they kind of let you go. And that's okay, too, but we as an HR can do a lot better job, and this was a great start for that. One week later, which was this past Monday, August eighteenth, is when we welcomed all of our staff. There again, seventeen new teachers this year. All of our positions are filled, I'm happy to say that, and they're off to a great start, and I believe that they're feeling pretty comfortable in their roles. I just have real quickly threw together probably July, August. Just in July and August, we've hired six K through twelve paraprofessionals. We currently have three open paraprofessional positions. I do believe they're all in special education, so we've hired six, we need three more. Community education paraprofessionals, we hired six, nutrition services, five, custodians, three, and transportation, one. So it just gives you an idea of the work going on, the directors and the principals getting the folks that they do need. And if you know anyone that's interested in being a paraprofessional, give me their name, and I'll pass that along. And to be quite honest with you, Amy Walzberger, our special ed director, she's sitting in a pretty good position. They are trying to get substitutes for those positions, but it's very important for our students and our staff that we get those filled as quickly as we possibly can. So that's kind of staffing in a nutshell, and if you have some questions with that afterwards, I'd be more than happy to try and answer them. One other thing we did on Tuesday, August fifth, it's the second time we've done it. I think we've got the date right this time. We did it in the spring, but we'll continue to keep doing it in the fall in August, and that is an employee job fair. Many years ago, we rent out a lot of our facilities here, and I point over to here because when QuickTrip came into town, I saw QuickTrip having a job fair in our New Prague schools. But then I would come to our meetings, and I would hear that we don't have any workers, we need more workers. And I'm like, well, we're renting out the facility for QuickTrip to get their workers, why aren't we doing that here? So you gotta be careful what you wish for and what you say about your ideas, because they might just ask you to do it. And this was something that has been phenomenal, and we had it from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. to try and accommodate folks who either had a job or a family or what it might be, approximately twenty to twenty-five people that day. And we hired six of those twenty-five people. And we hired two from the one in the spring. So right there, just by having a job fair, two job fairs, we have brought in eight employees from that job fair. And our HR folks are there, and then we also have, I have every director on speed dial, so if they have a question about nutrition services, we call them, and they either come down here and visit with those folks. But just something really, really good. Our other support staff, our powerful learning conference is on Thursday, August fourteenth. Our HR met with transportation, clerical, paraprofessionals, food service, and even substitutes. We have a substitute class. We had eighteen, fifteen to eighteen substitute teachers. We do that every single year, just to make sure that they have what they need before they step into the classroom. If any of you are interested in being a substitute teacher, again, you can talk to me after this meeting, and we would help you get your short call license, or maybe some of you still have your licenses. All right? But just some really, really good stuff. So what's the picture I'm trying to paint here a little bit tonight? We really want to make sure that our staff has what they need to be successful in their roles, just like every one of us, just like you as a school board member. What do you need to know? All right? And we want to be very upfront with what it is that they need to know. We want to answer their questions. We want to make sure that they have the information that they need to be successful in their position. And we want them to stay here. We want to retain those folks, because it is a lot of work to bringing, onboarding a staff member, and then even going the other way. There's enough just rollover from year to year, but there's a lot going on. Okay? With that, it's a very short presentation, but I just really wanted everyone to know the great work that goes on during the summers of bringing the folks in, how many people we brought in, just to give you a little bit of information going into this 2025-2026 school year. Any questions for me?
Nobody like to make a comment? Congratulations on the good work that you folks have done in human resources, because you've got a lot of competition out there. All the school districts are competing for good people, and you've done a good job of getting them for our district.
Thank you, Danny. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next, we'll go to the approval of the agenda since there is no open forum. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Next, we'll look at the consent agenda. Look at it and have no questions. I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Next, we'll go on to item number eight. And item eight is the board committee reports, and I will start that off. And we have not had a special education advisory council meeting yet this year, but we will have one, I'm sure, within the next month. Southwest Metro Intermediate School District met last Tuesday. They're off to a good start. They won't be having students yet, but they feel as though they're very ready for the upcoming year. They have a contract that needs approval, but once that's taken care of, it'll be all set. That is with the teachers. There is a full contingency of Philippine teachers. I remember last, it was a couple of years ago, I think, already. It's a program that allows teachers from the Philippines to come and teach at Southwest Metro, and they are coming, and they'll be situated and ready to go to help staff the Southwest Metro set of teachers. And also, we are fully staffed, and actually, we might be a little bit overstaffed, but that's okay, because you need substitutes. So a substitute to have on hand is not a bad thing at all. And finally, we had the superintendent share his goals for the upcoming year. We also talked about the fact that we only wanted about two or three, and he's an overachiever and came up with five of them. So we have a lot of goals that the superintendent for our intermediate school district has ready to work on. Next, we'll go to the next committee, which is the legislative committee.
We have not met since our last board meeting, but we will be meeting early September, and so we'll have more to share with you in this, at the September board meeting.
Thank you. Next, item A three is community education.
We have not had a meeting yet either, so it will be, as the school year has begun, I'm sure one will be coming up shortly.
Thank you. Early childhood community coalition.
No meeting. We should be meeting, though, I guess probably in the next month or two.
Okay. Next, item eight five, finance and facilities joint powers committee. Carrie, will you take that one?
Okay. We met as the finance committee on August thirteenth. It was Brian, us three board members, Danny, myself, and Dan, and then two community members. We talked about creating a cadence that mirrors the school kind of ebb and flow of finance, to do those meetings and have them be productive around what we're working on at the time. We discussed a lot of, some of the key budget factors, which haven't really changed from what's been presented over the summer and the last few months. So there wasn't much that stood out, except for it was enrollment is currently a little bit over budget, but as we learned that day, it changes day by day until October first, so it may not be forever. But we were looking good there. And we talked about, oh, PMA, Michael Hart, he presented again and talked about some of his metrics, as well as presented a tool that'll be used during the referendum to allow people to go in and put their exact tax parcel in and see what their, like, tax liability is without just having to sort of estimate it based on house value. So they're building that, which I think will be helpful. I think just to discuss, too, that the capital stuff was kind of put to the wayside for the operating referendum, and will need to be addressed at some point.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie. Next, item eight point six, equity committee, and we have not met with that committee this year yet. Item number eight seven, eight point seven, district advisory committee.
We meet on, let me find that. It's like September fourteenth or September twenty-second, somewhere in there.
Okay.
It'll be our first meeting, and the agenda hasn't been posted yet, so the topics will be presented.
Thank you. And the last committee, New Prague Area Education Foundation.
Hey, that's me. I'd like to just highlight who they are before I give a update, if you don't mind, just for our viewers that might be new. So we have the New Prague Education Foundation. It's a nonprofit organization that empowers teachers to add enriching curricula to their classrooms or create programs for New Prague area students that go above and beyond the normal classroom experience. And we graciously accept donations from individuals, businesses, and other organizations that fund both student scholarships and public and private school grants for teachers in their classrooms. It's really a fantastic organization, nonprofit if I didn't mention that, charitable. We meet about once a month, and it is such a privilege to be part of this group. There's maybe a dozen, fifteen people that are part of it. And our last meeting was on August fourth. We had a table set up at Checkout New Prague on Thursday, August seventh, in Memorial Park. We are right now facilitating an evening Friday, October twenty-fourth, and it's going to be an evening for education at Next Chapter Winery. Just fantastic night where we will have food and games and drinks, and it's a fundraising event for the New Prague Education Foundation. And anyways, lots of notes of business through the meeting, but all just very helpful, very inspiring. Are you going to be talking about Andy Beckius by chance and the golf tour, or the bus tour for Pat Beckius?
I surely can.
Okay. No, you know what? I'll just mention it. I wasn't, I'm sorry, we didn't cover that.
No, that's fine. And I'm happy to talk about the annual Pat Beckius bus tour.
Yes.
In honor of, put on by the Beckius family, in honor of Pat, someone who I'd never had an opportunity to meet, but a beloved educator and does a lot of really good things in New Prague.
Yes, and they raised this year, they visited six different parks, the bus tour did. That's within the last month here, and did a bus tour, again, in honor of Pat Beckius, who was a teacher here many, many years, just a wonderful woman. And they donated $1,000 to the New Prague Education Foundation, so really an honor that they do this for our children.
If I may, it's kind of one of our first things that the administrative team does when they're back for the first time, so it happened, I think, August fifth this year, or right around then. And Mr. Boothey gets a lot of credit for the work that he does with it behind the scenes, but they get a snack, they get read books, and oftentimes, they are able to take a book or two away with them as well. So a really cool event for, a really cool tradition in New Prague, and to honor the Beckius, Pat Beckius and her family.
Yes, and one of her sons is here in our district, has children in the district. Another one is in Jordan District, and another one is down south, so the boys are active in our area, which is great, and their children.
And I just want to mention, the fundraiser for the Ed Foundation has been moved back. It used to be held in August, and now it'll be held in October.
Right, and it's a new event. It'll be a little, yep, different than the summer social.
Oh, okay.
This is not necessarily a replacement, but we're considering it an entirely new event. So I think it's going to be great. If I didn't mention it, Next Chapter Winery.
You did.
And we will send information out to the district.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll move on to item nine point one now, the good news gratitude update.
All right. I'd like to officially welcome everyone back to the twenty-five-twenty-six school year. You know, it was great to see our ninth graders in session today. Our link crew did a really nice job. I was able to check in with them this morning. I made a tour at the middle school this afternoon, and I got to do my annual helping open a locker, which I, which I was glad that I was able to figure out myself, but that seems to be a little bit of attrition, tradition for me, that I don't know, somebody just asks, so I help. My buddy Kenny and I got it figured out. We'll welcome our elementary students tomorrow and then preschool students to join us later on in the week. And my, that's the good news, and my gratitude really is, when you think about all the decisions that are made between, as you wrap up a school year in preparation for a new school year, so from the spring through the summer until now, it doesn't just happen, it happens with a lot of really thoughtful work and a lot of behind-the-scenes work. So special thanks to our clerical team, buildings and grounds, maintenance, transportation, our administrators. I'm sure I'm missing some people, but good starts don't just happen, they happen because of the work that people have put in over time. But it's great to welcome our students and our families back, and we're excited for the twenty-five-twenty-six school year. Thank you.
Very good. It does take a lot of work, that's for sure, to get everything in place for that first days of school.
Certainly does.
Sure. Okay, next, we'll go on to item ten point two, and Andy will give us, ten point two?
Ten point one.
Oh, ten point one. First, oh, thank you. I like to skip things, don't I? Okay? We'll go on to item ten point one, first reading of the policies.
That's me. We have two first-read policies tonight. We have policy four fifteen, mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults. The purpose of this policy is to make clear the statutory requirements of school personnel to report suspected maltreatment of vulnerable adult, that word, vulnerable adults. This is a mandatory policy. Questions, comments, concerns? Ann?
None.
Kim?
No.
No, no, it's a good one.
No.
No.
Dan?
Nope.
Next one is policy four seventeen, chemical use and abuse. The school board recognizes that chemical abuse, use and abuse constitutes a grave threat to the physical and mental well-being of students and employees and significantly impedes the learning process. Chemical use and abuse also creates significant problems for society in general. The school board believes that the public school has a role in education, intervention, and prevention of chemical use and abuse. The purpose of this policy is to assist the school district in its goal to prevent chemical use and abuse by providing procedures for education and intervention. This also is a mandatory policy. Questions, comments, concern? Dan?
On section D for the pre-assessment teams, it talks about the schools that are participating in the program. Do we know which ones of our schools do and do not participate in it, and which ones are developing the teams and which ones don't?
Okay. You went, you mean like the levels of schools, high school, middle school, that kind of thing?
Yeah, it just says that if they're participating, they have to choose a team.
Yep.
And then if they don't participate, something gets designated, but it's not clear to me who participates, who doesn't, and what the reasoning would be in our district.
No.
Carrie?
No.
Danny?
Good.
No.
None.
Only two we have.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll go to item ten point two, the referendum update by Andy.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to try to present from here today, so if this doesn't go well, we'll note it in the next agenda item, all right? Wanted to do is just give a brief update to the school board and those people who are watching this evening with regards to the work of our referendum campaign. I would say, I try to quantify for you all how much work goes into a referendum campaign, and I would say a majority of my time right now, and a majority of the time when I'm together with other directors is referendum-related. So it's a significant amount of work, it's the right work, but we think we have a good plan, and we're getting ready to roll out now that the school year is up and running. So you've seen a lot of this, this is not new information, there's some newer information at the end, so I'm not going to go through all of this. But a reminder of what our request is, $510 per pupil, which equates to about $2 million a year for ten years, there is an inflationary factor built into that, and this is a maintenance request. After making $7 million in cuts-ish over the last several years, about fourteen percent of our operating budget, we oftentimes get asked, well, what are we going to bring back? And I would love to be able to bring back items, but this isn't what this request is about. This request is about maintaining what we have. If enrollment trends change, and yes, they are trending in a good direction, and I hope that continues up until October first, and over time, we can look at bringing back programs, but that's not the goal of this request. This is a maintenance request to maintain the positions and programs that we have. You can see our tagline, which is very similar to before. We have chosen to use a lot of the campaign that we used in the fall of twenty-three. We think it was solid, we think there's some areas that we've built in to our campaign that go into a little bit deeper level. Certainly, I'm able to talk at a deeper level now because of being here for now my third year, going through one campaign, going through the planning for success process where we audited kind of all aspects of the district. But you'll see some redundancy between this campaign and the last campaign, and that's intentional, because we believe that campaign had a lot of really good elements to it. Here is that key request again, and I draw your attention to the bottom of this slide that, you know, this isn't, this, you know, people ask me, well, when are we going to start to talk about this? We've been talking about this campaign for the last school year, ever since really the failed campaign in the fall of twenty-three. After that time, we, my job, one of the charges of the school board to me was, let's continue to talk about a referendum campaign. We chose to not do a referendum last year for several different reasons, but this campaign has been, has been talked about and discussed ever since, you know, December, January of twenty-three, twenty-four. And I think the board made a wise and prudent decision when they got good feedback from the community, and though we know we have some building needs as well, we decided to make this a one-question ask, for a long time, we were, this is going to be a two-question ask, or at least I thought that's where the direction we were headed. But because of the feedback we got from the community, not only did we make this a one-question strictly operating request, we also dropped the number that we asked. We asked for $3 million a year, had pretty favorable metrics, but because we know we don't work in isolation, right? We dropped this down to a $2 million per year request for ten years, a total of $20 million. One of the things that we are working on, and Mr. Fell, Director of Finance and Facilities, is working on is, you know, this is not unique to New Prague. I believe all of our neighboring districts are going to be asking questions, and those who have not, there's a couple, have recently had a question that, as they have gone to their voters, and they have had it approved. So this is a, not a New Prague, solely a New Prague issue, this is a concern for many districts in our region and many districts throughout the state of Minnesota, where we're asking to go to our voters to continue to support positions and programs. You've seen a lot of this, you see those numbers of reductions in the third bullet, those are both red. Those are both reductions that we made in cost containments. We're always looking to, even if we're not in reduction mode, we're always looking to areas where we can make our, our organization leaner. And that's, that's the history of New Prague when you think of fiscal responsibility that carries forward today. And though we don't want to do those things, we will look for cost containments if and when we can make them. And again, we've done that in totaling around $7 million. The last bullet I think is important, and, and these are what I refer to as our logical consequences that if we need to make structural budget adjustments going forward and you ask for my recommendation, part of my recommendation, depending on the size and scope of whatever that reduction may need to be, would involve class size increases at all, at all levels, elementary, middle and high school. It may involve reduction in transportation services. That meaning that we would ask our, our students who live in town to walk greater distances. It also means that students who don't live in town and still able, are able to benefit for transportation would probably have longer bus rides. So there's a, there's an in-town, if you reside in town, and if you are living in the country, you're, you're, it has an impact on that as well. And then it would be the loss of, of positions and programs. Again, this is a, this is a maintenance request. And so we're hoping to not do any of those. I, I've said, these aren't threats. They're only threats if we choose not to do them. And I would hope that we would never have to do them, but these are the logical consequences of what may be next if there isn't an infusion of, of revenue into our system. So there are the voting details. It's November 4th. I was going to count the days and I didn't get to it. But it seems like a long time from now, but it's, it'll come quickly. Obviously, we are, are preparing for November 4th. We're also preparing for early voting, which is something that we will continue to support. And that will start on Friday, September 19th. We get asked often, can we go to places and do mobile voting? No, we cannot. Voting has to take place here since we are the only election that is taking place. We are supporting that in the district. We can't be mobile in our efforts. And if people ask how to get involved, we have information campaigns that are going to start meeting in our buildings and some of them may have started to meet already. And then we have the advocacy campaign. The information campaigns are strictly that, they're sharing information. I'm not telling anyone here how to vote. On my time, I'm not telling anyone how to vote, nor should our staff tell anyone how to vote. It's our job to inform the community about why we're going to voters again, what the impact, what it looks like if it passes, what an impact looks like if it doesn't. And so that is the charge of the information teams that are meeting at each of the sites. The advocacy team is a group of individuals who we're hoping to, to name after this week, who will come together and if they so choose, then they will encourage people to vote one way or the other. And that team will be up and running, much like we did in the fall of '23. We hope to have that up and running in early September. Those are the community members who have reached out to me to say, how can I be involved? Right? And so I'll either direct them to the information campaign or the advocacy campaign. The last, I've just added a, our website, we hope to go live around September 1st. I know that's a Monday, so I think we're ready to go. Much of it is built, but we want to have as much detail as we can. It'll have all this information. It'll have that, that, that tax calculator that Director Cuff referenced, which I think will be beneficial for people who are interested to see, what does this mean to me? And it'll also have an FAQ and you can see some of the detail here that I've provided for you all. Again, this is a, about a 20 million, $20 per month increase on taxes. The, the, the home value of $400,000 is what we chose because that seems to be the average for all of the homes in the New Prague area schools. If you remember back to the fall of '23, it was 350. The tax impact was $19.26. Two years later, we believe that 400 is a fair number for us to work for. We'll also show some metrics over the next couple of, of months where we will hope for people to understand that, yes, it's a $20 a month increase, but over the last several years, because of our fiscal stewardness and because how conservative we've been with taxpayer, our taxpayers' investment into our schools, we've actually dropped people's taxes at that same whole value by about $15 a month. So in a time and area when people are coming to local communities to, for an increase, over the last several years, a home valued at $400,000 for us has actually dropped by $15. So we believe this to be a, a fair request. You could see how it's different from the year before. In order to get to that $2 million, we needed to ask for $510 compared to $450 per pupil. And that's because of the, the slight drop in enrollment that we've had from '23 to '25. What are some of the things that we've done? Those $7 million in reductions, those past reductions that have had an impact on all parts of our system. Very back, my first meeting in March of '23, when you were acting, those of you who were on the board, were acting on the first round of reductions. Your goal then, as it should have been, was to keep these reductions as far away from the classroom as you possibly could. Right? And that is, that is true for any district that, that is making reductions. Any district that I'm aware of, as a point of context, that was the, those were the first round of reductions that the New Prague area schools had made in over 13 years in the spring of '23. I'll get my years mixed up a little bit. The, the, the more cuts that have to be made, the closer they get to the classroom. When, when 83% of our, our budget is salaries and benefits and a good majority of that is tied up in our classrooms as you want it to be and as our community wants it to be and as I want it to be, it's harder to keep these reductions away from the classroom. So the reductions have had an impact in all different aspects of the organization. I think it's also important to, to remind everyone out in the, in the general community, the amount of work that, that you have all put into making this decision. This wasn't just something that we decided over the summer. This was studied for the better part of a year plus. We, we took a community survey, which I think informed some of your decision-making. Again, at one point, we thought this to be going to a two-question ask because of the good, good work that is still there and was done by our facilities task force. And their recommendation again was deferred maintenance and safety and security. But the board made a decision to make this a one-question ask with the priority on the operating side of the equation. That doesn't mean that we still don't have needs in deferred maintenance and safety and security, right? That need is still there. But, but this, this decision is, as I've said before, I said to the staff on Tuesday, and I'll say again, is a New Prague area schools' decision. But you also have to take into consideration the federal, the state and the local government and what is taking place. And so a lot of thought and energy was put into $2 million a year for 10 years. Leads into the question that I get asked probably the most often is how, why would you do this at the same point when the city is deciding to build a new police station? And what I have said is, for me anyway, as I speak on your behalf, is that we want to be strong partners with our community partners, from the police to the, to the EMS, to the Chamber of Commerce and all the different communities that we represent. And it's not my job to, to tell the police or the Chamber of Commerce what, what they should do at their particular time, right? Nor would I want them to come to us and say, this isn't a good idea for X, Y and Z. And so we are the only entity that needs to go to voters to have their taxes raised. And we did that. We've informed the decision with the study. But we are the only entity that has to go to voters to say, are you okay if we raise taxes? Whether it be for operating funds or a building need like safety and security, so on and so forth. So we have listened to the community. It doesn't mean that people would love and are jumping for joy to have their taxes raised. I heard something over the weekend that there was a question whether or not people were interested in a root canal or having their property taxes raised, and it was about a 50/50 split. I can't confirm that, one way or the other. But we believe it was the right decision, I believe it was the right decision for where we're at at this particular time with the information that we have. And then lastly, I would say that going back to, this is a maintenance request. This, unfortunately, this isn't about adding programs. It doesn't mean we're not always continuing to look at our programs to see what we can do, do less with more. But I can't promise people that we would lower class sizes or would bring back a specific program or a position if this referendum were to pass in November. So more to come, but I thought I would pull out a few of our frequently asked questions as a little bit of update for you all. You probably have seen some of that, as well as for our audience who maybe has not. Questions, comments from the group?
Is presentation going to be on the website?
This presentation is on the, the board website, right? It's out there. There, this information will be on the website. I don't know if this one will be packaged that way. This is just kind of some of a, a high-level things that we're working on at this point. But all of this information will be on the, the website at some point.
Relating to the voter approval piece, some of the feedback I've gotten, kind of concerned about this is when the legislation changed in 2023, that boards could renew operating referendums without bringing it to voters, that we're really going out and asking for a 20-year referendum instead of a 10. What is our kind of stance on whether we would just go back to the voters after a 10 or make some assurances to them that we wouldn't just pass it again?
I can, I can jump in. That was a one-time request that boards could, that boards could, could take that. And again, it was very early on, so I don't, don't have all the terminology. But boards were given the option because of the legislative session in the spring of '23 to do that once. So as of now, New Prague area schools would not be able to do that again because they've already taken that. I want to use the term waiver. I don't know if that's the correct terminology, forgive me. But that is not a, you get to do this anytime you want. We've, you had one opportunity to do that. I believe the board made a good decision in the spring of '23, summer of '23 to, to, to use that one-time waiver. They would not have the opportunity to do that again.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Andy? I'd just like to say that we're not unique. I have 11 school boards that make up the Southwest Metro and a majority of them are all going out for a referendum for operation. So we're, we're in this together with a lot of other school districts. It's, it's one of those things where the legislature has not funded our schools adequately. And they put the burden on the school boards and on the local taxpayers to, you know, support their local schools.
And if I may, I'll just accentuate one more time. Over the last two years for a $400,000 home, New Prague area schools have lowered the taxes for residents by about $15. So in a time and a, in an era when, Mr. Evlichek, what you said is true, and we've made some very difficult decisions, cutting $7 million is not easy, right? But we have been able to lower the, the taxable rate for, for our, our, our citizens and still, I think, provide a pretty high-quality educational experience. And so we think this is a fair request at this point.
Thank you. Okay, next we'll go on to item 10.3, the superintendent evaluation. And every year, school boards evaluate their superintendent. We choose to do it via a questionnaire that is given to the administrators and to the school board members. And those are the two groups of people in a school district that work most closely with the superintendent. So it makes good sense. And our survey consists basically of two parts. One is a positively framed set of questions. And people can either strongly agree, agree, disagree, or strongly disagree. And that's the choices that we have when we fill out the questionnaire. And the other part of the survey is open-ended. And that gives people that are filling out the questionnaire a chance to bring up positive or negative things about the superintendent in the form of a comment that is recorded in the evaluation. So Kim and I had the opportunity of going over the evaluation and we went over the evaluation with Andy. And it's a very, very positive evaluation. The results were overwhelmingly in the strongly agreed side of the questions. And I'll give you an example of a couple of questions that were asked. One is, acts as a liaison between the community and the district in response to concerns of parents, students, citizens and staff to increase understanding of policies and practices. And in this particular one, it was strongly agree, strongly agree, strongly agree, agree, strongly agree, strongly agree, agree. It was overwhelmingly, people felt that he does a great job along that question particularly. Then another one would be oversees all financial operations of the district and prepares, presents and recommends various budgets to the board. Again, strongly agree, agree, strongly agree. One person did not, I guess there was another choice. He could strongly, not disagree or agree, chose to be neutral. And then strongly agree, 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 strongly agree. So again, an example of how the results have come in. Basically, most people think very positively of the questions that were answered and the way he handles those types of situations. And then the comments, I'll give you a couple of examples of the comments that were shared. Andy is consistent in addressing all issues that come his way in a manner that is very effective and thoughtful. Another one says, he deals with difficult situations and is always looking for ways to make improvements. The superintendent has strong relationship-building skills. Dr. Valmuth is both a rational and creative thinker when dealing with difficult situations. Under Mr. Valmuth's leadership, I believe New Prague area schools continues to provide a high level of education to all students. Andy's leadership is incredible. He is one of the best superintendents I have ever worked with. Dr. Valmuth listens to the concerns of the staff and community well. He asks great questions to get to the bottom of concerns. His command of the room in front of a group of people is outstanding. And basically, that was the digest of the responses that we got, both from the administrators and from the school board. So Andy, we really feel that you're doing a great job as a result of the outcome of that evaluation. And congratulations, because I know last year when we did this, Matt was reading the results and, and, and the impression that, you know, the, we got from the survey. And again, it was very, very positive. So keep up the good work, Andy. I did ask Andy to do one favor, and that is to do a, a little self-evaluation on the goals that he set for himself. So I know sometimes we're the harshest critics of ourselves, but we'll see if Andy cuts himself some slack.
I tried to talk him out of this. I would like that noted. I would just say that it's a total team effort. I really would. You know, I, I feel very fortunate for the, for the directors that I get to work with, the principals, the school board members. We faced some difficult challenges that none of us wanted to face, but I think we have done our best to, to persevere and to make the most out of this situation. I am my own worst critic and so, you know, I'm never content. And, but I, I want to just be very, in my opening remarks, just be very clear at how thankful I am for the people that I get to work with. And, and there's so many great things that happen in the New Prague area schools on a, on a daily basis. And certainly we need to get better, and I need to get better myself. But I, I would hope for people who maybe don't have a scan of other districts like I have, been able to have through my experiences. I hope people to understand that there is so many positives here and it's really just the people that we, they're able to work with, right? We have wonderful staff. We have wonderful teachers. We have wonderful paraprofessionals. We have wonderful people throughout the organization. And so I'm really pleased at the, the systems and structures that we've been able to put in place that I think will take this great organization and hope to move it to the next level. And really hoping to, to do good work with the referendum this fall so that we can start to scale up some things besides referendum and budget discussions for the foreseeable future and continue the good work that we're doing on behalf of our, all of our students and families. So I, I, I say this to Danny all the time, I'll say this in public. I, I feel very fortunate and very thankful for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. And I wanted to give Kim an opportunity. She also worked with me on the evaluation. Kim, do you have any closing remarks that you'd like to make on?
Oh, no. After reviewing all of the different things and, and talking about it and stuff, there's lots of positive thoughts, lots of good feedback. As we always say, there's always room for improvement in any of us, but I think he's doing a great job.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, we'll go on then to the only action item, and that's one, that's 11, and that is a resolution. Dan, could you take it away?
Sure thing. Resolution relating to the appointing election judges and absentee ballot board members for the November 4th, 2025 school district special election. Be it resolved by the school board, the Board of Independent School District Number 721 New Prague Area Schools, Minnesota, the school district as follows. It is hereby found, determined, and declared as follows. One, the following individuals, each of whom is qualified to serve as an election judge, are hereby appointed as judges of elections, of election for the school district special election on November 4th, 2025, to act at, as such at the polling places listed below. St. Patrick Social Hall, address and, and polling places serving territory and the judges listed. Elko New Market, City Hall, with the address and judges listed. IC Church Civic Center, with the address and judges listed. New Prague Fitness and Aquatic Center, with the address and judges listed, and this is a joint polling, so it's listed again, New Prague Fitness and Aquatic Center, with the judges listed. Alternate judges may be trained and appointed as needed. Two, the election judges shall act as clerks of election, count the ballots, cast and submit the results to the board for canvas in a manner provided for other school district elections. Three, the following individuals, each of whom is qualified to serve as an election judge, are hereby appointed as absentee ballot board members for the school district special election on November 4th, 2025, to act as such at the absentee voting location listed below. New Prague Area Schools Central Education Campus, 410 Central Avenue North, New Prague, Minnesota, 56071. New Prague School District Office Staff, Sandy Lynn, Jen Saylor, Patty Solhide, Vera Schunecker, Alan Stika, Lori Biesek, and Barb Boothie. Four, the following individuals, each of whom is qualified to serve as an election judge, are hereby designated to deliver absentee ballots to hospital patients and residents of healthcare facilities in accordance with Minnesota statutes, Section 203B dot 11, subdivision 1, for the school district special election on November 4th, 2025. New Prague School District Office Staff, Sandy Lynn, Barb Boothie, Jen Saylor, Patty Solhide, Vera Schunecker, Lori Biesek, and Alan Stika. Upon vote, oh, is there a, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Awesome. Karen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Hi.
Carrie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Dan, yes.
Thank you. And with that being taken care of, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a second.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item passes. Thank you, everybody.